October 4th, if you could all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. Welcome. Madam Clerk.
Chairman, motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion made by Tim, seconded by Tony to approve. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is the seven minutes. We have the council meeting minutes to 10:13, March 20, March 21, and March 22.
Motion to approve.
Would they be all, uh, chair, I mean, uh, counsel? All four of them?
Correct.
Okay, I'll second that.
Motion made by Tim, seconded by Tony to approve all minutes proposed. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is C1. This is a public hearing for Kevin Francis. This is called Clubhouse, 9521 Street. And this is a request for modification to the extension of the Class B license premises.
As the clerk pointed out, this is a public hearing, so we're going to open the public hearing. Is there anyone here to speak in favor? If you could, please state your name, uh, full name and address for the record.
Brianna Stunmark, 183 Bayview Avenue, Bristol, Rhode Island.
Welcome. So you're here to speak in favor?
Yeah.
Tell us why.
Um, I've been working at the clubhouse since I was 18. I've been there for 13 years now. I now manage the clubhouse for Kevin Francis and his family. Um, we've recently made these additions to the clubhouse. Great additions, actually. He actually ended up recycling the bar from tweets. Uh, so it's stayed in town, basically. Um, it's going to be great for the summer. We already have people that love sitting out there. So we think it's going to be a great addition to what we already have there. Basically, that's it.
Questions from the council? Don't all speak at once. Outstanding. Alright, thank you. Anyone else to speak in favor? Anyone else to speak in favor? Anyone else to speak in favor? Anyone to speak against? Anyone to speak against? Anyone to speak against?
Motion to close the public hearing.
If, so bef, uh, we are going to do that, but just, uh, wanted to bring everybody's attention. We're actually going to take action right now. It's not a separate agenda item, whatever this council so chooses to do. So we had a motion to close the public hearings. Our second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. What's this council's pleasure?
I make a motion that we approve the liquor license. I mean, um, the bar, uh, the, the expansion, I should say.
May I suggest in addition to that, as we typically do, is a review after?
Six months.
Six months, um, but also actually more specifically, because this is more of a, uh, seasonal, right? We should probably wait to do that review. When, when does, we should have asked you this question beforehand. When will the bar close and when will it reopen, assuming it gets approved here?
So it is outside and it is completely covered. Um, so we all really have like a cool open date.
It's going to stay open?
It's going to stay open. We're going to close it in the winter, so then that way, uh, you know, snow and all that's not coming in.
So maybe a six-month review from today?
Maybe six months, and then if we feel we need to do it in the summer, we can do it again.
Is everybody okay with that?
Yeah.
Okay. So I heard that motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Good luck.
Good luck.
I think she's here.
Okay, I'll let you speak just in a moment. You can, I'd, I'd like to first hear, um, who would be best to talk about? I, we have obviously this agenda item in front of us. Um, where did this propose, if you could just remind this council and, uh, the public? Where did this request come from and why do we, if, just for all, uh, clarity? Thank you.
August, a petition at 71 King Philip Avenue, forgetting my name, petition the council for a no parking box on the, um, east side of King Philip Avenue due to, um, person limitations and needing, uh, bus access in front of the home. The council, um, did pass an ordinance, although the ordinance was, um, this raised, and instead of saying on the east side, it said the west side. So this is a correction to that, to make sure that the no parking box goes onto the side that was requested.
So Madam Clerk, that was very clear. Thank you. Is it, so we took action?
Correct.
But was there, and do you know, or does, uh, Mr. Ministry, I'm not sure if you know, um, was there signage put up there? Has anything changed? Obviously, it's an ordinance, so it's, it has law, but was there signage put up? I do not recall.
I do believe that when DPW was going to go there, the neighbor came out and said it was on the wrong side. That's when we brought it to our attention. And then, did we?
It should have been temporary signs put up, uh, because there was indication that there was a school bus stop there, and there was an accessibility issue uh, for a child, so, uh, we did authorize temporary signs, signs of the.
Okay, so in front of us this evening is a second reading for correction.
Correct.
That, so the, it, there's nothing changing physically or in our, it's, it was just listed incorrectly.
Correct.
Do I understand that right?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, Mrs., if, S, how do you say your last name?
Steeves.
E. Steeves, please. If you could state your full name and address for the record.
My name is Pat Steeves, and I live at 74 King Philip Avenue in Bristol.
Welcome.
Okay, now, um, what I'm hearing, it's already been assigned for no parking.
That's what I wanted for, that's exactly correct.
So, and what I understand is on the wrong side, and right now there is painting on the opposite side of the house that says no parking. Then at that house, there's also cones up there saying, no parking, toe zone. So right now, we have three less parking spaces, and my concern is, I've been living there for 45 years. A couple of years ago, six parking spots have been taken from us. Now we're going to lose more parking spots, which will leave us from Platte to Dyer to parking spots. I have a very sick husband at home. His visiting nurse had to park at sunrise last week and walk down. I have grandchildren. There's no parking. They have to park down there at sunrise. We're not going to have any spots on the street. Two spots is not enough for eight houses between Platte and Dyer. And I, I don't mind, I understand there's an autistic child. They rent the house and he, they get off, get on the, it's a van that picks them up. The whole thing is, on Dyer Road, their house, they have a driveway with three parking spots, and there's an additional two parking spots right on the side of the road, where if that van just pulled them there, that child would be fine getting on the, um, the van.
We're listening. Okay.
So I mean, it's just that, right now, there's no parking. I mean.
I'm unclear, uh, on, you had said that there is no parking on both sides of the road.
Right now, there's no parking on both sides.
So we, I'm not sure who can answer this, and maybe we need to continue this, and I'm okay with that, for do some more. Is, yeah, actually, you know what? I'm going to stop, because my colleagues and I agree that we'd like to continue this to get some more clarity. Um, I myself and probably my colleagues want to know, just, uh, we obviously passed the ordinances, right? But what ordinance controls the east and the west side? Is it a duplicate? Is everything the way it's, we had planned on it being? Are there other opportunities? Did this, the, the person who petitioned the council to ask us to do this? Is there an opportunity for, you had mentioned one possibility. I don't know if that's an actual possibility for them. And for the record, no one is more or less important, right? So everyone, your husband, uh, this person's son, everyone is as important, okay? So if my, and it sounds like my colleagues agree, let's just continue this to the next meeting. And at that next meeting, if we could get some clarity on both sides, um, what the ordinance are there, and maybe there's an opportunity not to put this in and find another solution.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to continue to the November 1st council meeting. And, um, just to add to your requests, I'd also like to understand, you said there was cones or some?
Yes, there's two cones right, um, in front of the house.
That must be the temporary.
And it says, no parking, toe zone.
Okay, so if we could get clarification too on that.
Now, which house? Are you on the water side or the other side?
I am on the water side.
So the, the, the petitioner, the original petitioner is on the other side.
It's on the opposite side, and then there's a no parking which was put down by the.
Few years ago, yes. Yeah, right?
So that's where the mistake was, that it was on the east side. You're on the east side. It should be on the west side.
The west side.
That must be the temporary that they were talking about, that they put up the cones, maybe?
Uh, oh.
We'll find out.
We're going to get more clarification.
Well, I'll tell you what, we're all interested to make sure that this is next logical and good step, so, um, we also will, uh, we have a lot of questions, so we're going to continue this the next, we had a motion.
I'll second that, Mr. Chairman.
So we had a motion from Tim, seconded by Tony to, uh, continue to the next meeting for clarity. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, members of the council, the next item on the agenda is C2. This is ordinance 2023-20 to Chapter 19, Article 1. Um, and this is for prohibited areas and rules governing peddlers, hawkers, itinerant vendors, and mobile food establishments. And this is to include itinerant vendors and mobile food establishment, first reading.
I motion that we consider this first reading.
Second. Motion made by Tony, seconded by Tim, that this is first reading. Any discussion? I do. Uh, Madam Clerk, thank you. You continue to be, uh, take efforts to clean up, uh, some of these ordinances, and this council appreciates it.
Thank you.
So thank you. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, and members of the council, the next item on the agenda is D1. This is Dave Scarpino, the chairman of the Bristol Christmas Festival, and this is a request for mobile food truck establishment event permit for the Christmas festival for Saturday, December 9, 2023, and Sunday, December 10, 2023, from 12 to 6.
Based on all the positive recommendations, motion to approve.
Second.
Motion made by Tim, seconded by Tony to approve. Any discussion? David, would you like a 30-second commercial? That's a outstanding brevity. We appreciate that. Any other discussion?
It's going to be a good time.
Absolutely. Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Good luck.
Mr. Chairman, and members of the council, the next item on the agenda is D2. This is Robert McNeil from McNeil Design Collaborative, Inc., doing business as the Northeast Golf Company, Bristol Golf Park, 96 Broad Common Road, and this is a request for a vigilance license.
I make a motion that we approve it.
Second.
Motion made by Tony, seconded by Tim to approve. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is D3. This is Robert McNeil, McNeil Design Collaborative, doing business as the Northeast Golf Company, the Bristol Golf Park, 96 Broad Common. This is a request for dancing entertainment license.
Is Mr. McNeil here? No. Okay. I'm, I'm disappointed, because I wanted to have some dialogue about this. I do support what we've just passed. We have some discussion on the next agenda item about, uh, uh, liquor license and being handled correctly. For myself, I have some concerns about, um, uh, dancing and entertainment license, at least at this point. I would be happy to consider it after X amount of time open. Um, I'm concerned that it's, I, I don't know, I, I was hoping to hear from the applicant of the need for it, um, but I'm interested to hear what my colleagues think.
Based on a positive recommendations, I'm willing to approve it. I'm happy to do, I know that we've, uh, there's a six-month review. Uh, if you feel more comfortable, we can always shorten that amount of time and have a three-month review, and I'll, I'll second that.
Okay, so we had a motion made by Tim. I took that as a motion, too?
Yes.
Okay, and seconded by Aaron to approve. Discussion?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I pretty much feel like you do. Uh, I think it's a bit premature at this point in time. Um, you know, certainly we want to aim to succeed with the business, uh, but, um, a bit premature, and it's unfortunate that he's not here to answer some of our questions or address some of the concerns that we may have.
I agree with, with Tony and with you. In terms of, I think this should just be carried over to the next meeting, um, and find out more about the dancing and entertainment, huh?
I said, I, I'm okay with that. That makes a lot of sense.
The dancing and entertainment license, because I'm trying to figure out, like, just how big the place is. Um, because in the drawings, the renderings that we've seen, it doesn't look like a very large place. So, you know, what is the intent and over? You know, they're going to be having, like, the outdoor seating and player viewing area and picnic tables. Is that where they plan to have the entertainment? Is it going to be, I know, like, one of the breweries, um, the one over there, Vigilant, I think, they were doing, like, music in the summer, like, on Sunday afternoons. I never went, but I, you know, would read about it. I mean, is that what they're looking to do? Because that's, you know, or is this something like till 11, 12 o'clock at night?
I don't know.
And that's the, the question, I mean, that's the question that we have, I think.
But I do like your proposal. I would rather not say no. I would like to hear from the applicant, understand what they're looking to do, and there's possible that they could, um, uh, answer these concerns to, to a place where we could say yes to. So if, Mary, if you're comfortable, uh, actually, gentlemen, you had a motion and a second. Would you be comfortable with continuing this to our next meeting?
I have no problem doing that.
Yeah, that, this, uh, this little building looks a little small for, uh, putting people in there. They'd have to be some pretty small people, right, to have a dancing and entertainment license for that building? So, um, and typically, we do get, um, like a, like a rendering, right, of the, like, the venue in which they'll be
courting off.
Yeah, having the entertainment and everything like that, so I think there could be some value in maybe seeing something.
Well, they have it, they have it here in this, uh, but it's like picnic tables, chairs, outdoor seating, uh, player viewing area, and they put aside a small area for the entertainment area. And that's what I want to know, like, is this just once in a while, like during, on the weekends, with, like, music during the day? Is this going late into the night? Stuff like, that's what we don't know.
Right, we're being proposed.
So, Mr. Chairman, I'll amend my motion to continue this to the November 1st council meeting.
To the, if you would, to the 15th, since they're going to be back in front of us for the public hearing?
Uh, motion to continue to the November 15th meeting.
Okay. Aaron, you second?
Yeah, I'm, I'm fine with that.
Any other discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, and members of the council, the next item on the agenda is F1, and this is Robert McNeil from McNeil Design Collaborative, Inc., doing business as the Northeast Golf Company, the Bristol Golf Park, and this is a request for one additional Class B limited license, and this is called for public hearing on November 15th.
Mr. Chairman, very much like the other items, since he's not here, I would request that we, uh, continue.
We can call if you're okay with it. We can call for that public hearing and then have that discussion at that point?
I think so, yeah.
Perfect. Alright, so I'll take that as a motion. Tony, is there a second?
Second.
Oh, a motion and a second by Mary. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, and members of the council, the next item on the agenda is F2. This is Susan Proto, 245 Chestnut Street, and this is a request for no parking on the south side of Chestnut Street, adjacent to her mailbox. And we did, I just want to let you know, I did receive an email from Ms. Proto just a little while ago. Um, there, she had an unforeseen circumstance, somebody had to come and see her mom, so she's not able to make it tonight, and she asks that the council consider, um, continuing to the November 1st meeting.
I don't remember the last time we've continued to a meeting.
I know, I know.
It's okay, it's okay. Happy to oblige.
I, I don't, um, can I just make a suggestion? And my first, when I was reading this before I got the request for an ordinance, I had written, oh, we need an ordinance. Then as you went further into this, um, the, uh, postmaster in Bristol says that they can, um, ask for an exemption and get their mail delivered to their home. And, um, and, you know, because we would have to basically have no parking on that whole street. I think they said there are five, um, mailboxes. So I have no objection to carrying it over to the, the first, but it might be worth asking Mrs. Proto if she could, um, pursue that and see if that's, because that's what I was going to suggest, like, you know, try to pursue that avenue. If you can get it delivered, you and your neighbors on those five houses, then we wouldn't need to, to do the ordinance.
I, I did take the liberty to let her know that, and she said that she had tried at one time to, um, apply for that exemption that, but it's not as easy as it stated, and that she wants to, sometimes to explain that to the council. So I did bring that to her attention.
Okay, thank you.
So can I have a motion to continue?
Somebody made a motion, no?
I didn't hear that motion, did I?
Uh, so move.
Second.
Motion made by Aaron, seconded by Tony to continue to our November 1st meeting. Any other discussion?
Yeah, I just, I had a couple of points too that I wanted to raise up, and those would just be quick ones, but I, I drove by the area, I noticed that, um, I know that this is a state road, right? Gooding is a state road, I, in the hazard. Or, yeah, I'm sorry, uh, Chestnut, Chestnut's a state road. Um, and, and I noticed that, uh, all these mailboxes here are.
Just one moment? No.
Chestnut is not. Top road, okay, okay. Um, I, I think the, the one thing that I, the other thing I noticed about it, which is a little germane to the issue, is, um, the mailboxes in the middle of the sidewalk is, do we have, like, an exemption where we allow mailboxes to be in the middle of a sidewalk in, I guess, contravention to our 36-inch rule for right-of-way, public right-of-way? A wheelchair cannot get down these sidewalks if, you know, a kid has to get to school or something like that.
I'm certainly not aware of that, and that there certainly should be, the ADA requirement should be met, so. You're saying each of the mailboxes are right in the middle of the sidewalk?
Well, there, there, there's definitely not 36 inches of passable space right of way.
Is that one of the reasons why the mail delivery?
It was not stated.
No, 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 no. It's a rural route, and they only can, they can't go to the houses. They have to just be able to drop it off on that side where they drive, I think, is the issue. And so these people who live on the, um, other side, like the school side, their mailboxes are across the street.
Gotcha.
And, I mean, in the picture, they did show, like, mailboxes, so, but I would, I would just go back to, um, you know, the, uh, the police department, uh, who had suggested the denial based on the fact that they had the conversation with the postmaster, so they probably need to go back to, maybe with, uh, Mrs. Proto and figure out, like, is it simple like they're making it sound like, or is it really far more complicated? It's not going to work. Because we just, you know, it's not really fair that the, that these are blocked, you know, um, every day. But if we can find a solution.
Right, but this would apply to each and every one of the houses, then.
Right.
Correct.
So you'd be, we'd be asked to prevent, no parking at all.
Right, they said they need 60 feet of, to come in and go out, like.
Yeah, okay.
But I, I can see also, though, like, nowadays, people are, in terms of the mail, they're getting prescription medicines, they're getting prescription eyeglasses that way and things like that. If, if they're not able to get their mail sometimes, sometimes that could mean they're not getting their medication and things like that, or some of the other important things that they otherwise would be getting. But I, I totally get it. You, I mean, you don't want to just clear off some of these parking places, but I think that demonstrates even more why we should be working with the post office on this, if folks are, um, having a hard time getting their mail.
And also, and also the schools. I mean, i- i- a lot of this is because the kids are parking up all the way up the street, so.
That is the reason, and they, so it's not that she can't walk over there and go between the cars to get her mail. It's because the mail carrier rural route cannot, has to drop it off in that box, and has to be able to pull up to it, uh, from what I gather here. And, um, I don't know how many rural routes we have. I think we have a fair number in town, but this is like a very busy area, so might be rural for houses, but it's a busy street.
So we will, we have a motion and a second to continue, um, and we can certainly have some more dialogue about this. And Mary, I like your suggestion of proposing that there should be some additional conversation. Um, and Aaron, you brought up another point, the picture that this council is looking at of this, uh, mailbox in particular has a large base on it. It's not just a post going in, which takes up additional sidewalk space. Uh, I think we're all familiar with the area, and I know that the high school parking is at a premium over there, so losing an 60 feet times five is, is 300 feet of parking that we just couldn't do. That's unreasonable, but, um, maybe we can advocate on her behalf and others, um, to work with the post office. Okay? Any other discussion?
Just, Mr. Chairman, I think we should also involve the school, only because if it displaces a big number of kids, you don't want kids walking all the way down Chestnut Street to school and all the way back, if we're going to displace quite a, a lot of cars. So just, just looking at it, on all sides.
Well, I would just like to know if this is a required, um, type, like, if this is the mailbox they have to use for rural route, or is this one that, every one of these is different, because we just have the picture of the one?
Fair enough. Anything else? No other discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, and members of the council, the next item on the agenda is F3. This is Carrie Costello from Wicked Good Health LLC, 295 Hope Street. This is a request for an accessible parking space in front of the business establishment on the west side of Hope Street, second reading.
Based on all the positive recommendations, make a motion to approve the second reading, and, um, I guess approval to approve the resolution.
Second.
Motion made by Tim, seconded by Tony to approve. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is F4. We have David Andre from Andre's Catch, 186 Wood Street. This is a request to extend the current load zone on the north side of Charles Street in the easterly direction. This is for a total of 66-foot load zone.
Based on all the positive recommendations, make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion made by Tim, seconded by Tony to approve.
To draft an ordinance.
To should be, yeah.
To refer to the town solicitor to draft an ordinance.
That's what I heard.
Motion to refer to the solicitor to draft an ordinance. Thank you, Madam Chair.
And then I heard Tony second.
Madam Clerk, Madam Clerk.
Discussion? Um, it came up in conversational but earlier, is that, uh, in that proposal, I think this should, I'm, I'm fine with this. I just, uh, I, I think it should be based off hours, though, meaning it doesn't need to be no parking when you're not open, so.
Very good.
Any other discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Was there discussion? I'm sorry?
No, just very briefly, because I know they hear, just to understand, it's not that we did not approve it, but it has to go to the council to draft an ordinance for that to happen. Okay.
I'll take that vote, uh, so, no other discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Thank you.
You too.
The next item on the agenda is G1. We have the 4th of July Committee. This is the proposed membership for 2023 to 2025.
Motion to approve as stated.
Mr. Chairman, I have to recuse myself.
Okay. We had a motion made by Tim to approve as proposed. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion made by Tim, seconded by Aaron. Any other discussion?
Thanks.
Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Welcome back.
Mr. Chairman, and members of the council, the next item on the agenda is G2. This is the Newport and Bristol County Convention and Visitors Bureau. This is one term to expire September 2026, and we have Karen Binder from 11 Polly Street, and her, that was for term expiration.
So it is, this council's, we're going to need to go out to advertise? Karen, did, she can only have one term, is that correct?
I think it's two terms, and she's completed her two terms, her next month term's set.
Gotcha. Okay, so we need to go out and advertise for this opening?
In the letter of thank you to Karen, you know, for, for her time of service.
Agreed.
I would, um, I think we should advertise, and then we either convey to Karen, or she's made some suggestions, and she might just want to tell those people to submit their application according the, to the appropriate fashion.
So we, we need a motion. I, I didn't make one.
So the motion is to, uh, send a let, uh, send a letter to Karen in appreciation for her time of service and advertise for the position.
Second.
Motion made by Tony, seconded by Tim. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, and members of the council, the next item on the agenda is G3. This is the Bristol Housing Authority. This is one unexpired term set to expire January 2025. twenty twenty-five. And we have Raymond Cudero, seventy-three Franklin Street with a letter of resignation.
Likewise, I would say that we accept the resignation with regret and send a letter of appreciation for the years of service and advertise for the position.
Second.
Motion made by Tony, seconded by Tim. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. And just a moment to say thank you to all of our boards and commissions. I'll take Ray as a great example of being on the board for quite a while, obviously a former council person. And he's not alone with giving his time and energy and their time and energy back to the town, and this council appreciates it. So thank you.
Mr. Chairman and members of the council, the next item on the agenda is H one, and this is old business, and this is from the Office of Secretary of State. And this is for the program coordination and formation of the local two fifty municipal committee.
Motion to, basically, accept the recommendation from the town administrator to form the local two hundred and fifty, fiftieth commission as stated. What do we think?
Second. So there's a motion made by Tim, seconded by Aaron. Mr. Administrator, you gave some recommendations after our last meeting. Could you just highlight those real quick, if you wouldn't mind?
Sure. So, yeah.
Yes.
So, yeah, it's exciting, similar to the bicentennial. Fifty years ago, some of us tried my book.
What are you talking about?
Actually, I do.
I do, too, yeah.
You, you just, you just split the room there, Steve.
So it is exciting. I spoke to a few members of the community, some of the members of these groups that I mentioned in my recommendation. And the key here is to not let the message of the anniversary, the two hundred year of our nation be lost. So it needs to be a unique celebration. Doesn't need to be anything huge and elaborate, but maybe some reenactments, souvenir coins, a program book, something very unique to the celebration and to how Bristol's contributed to our nation. So that's why I think it's a, it's a great idea to have a, a collaborative here. Members who are appointed by the town council three, somebody met, a member from the town administration that I appoint, School of Bristol, representing School of Bristol, Bristol Fourth of July Committee, Bristol Historic Preservation Society, the school district, who hopefully gains input from students, and also riding on the university, has a great deal of resources and help with research, and maybe the students can help also. So I think those nine members would be very manageable, and obviously they'd open it up for other subcommittees and so forth. But those nine members would report quarterly to the town council before their minutes, and they, and I'm also recommending that they turn during the budget process, some seed money to get started with maybe meeting expenses or publications to get, get started. That's my recommendation.
Well thought out.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Well thought out.
It's a great group. It's a great makeup of the group. I, I think it's going to be a fantastic celebration.
Any other discussion?
Just briefly, how many did you say from the council?
Three.
Three, three appointments from the council.
Okay.
With a total of nine.
You know, and I would even move to say a council member or their appointee.
I don't know if you can do that, can you? With separation, I mean, can?
You, you could, but probably best to follow community members. Steve's come up.
We're happy to interview you, Tony.
I think it's like, I think, I think that those organizations are already out there, like Historical Society, I think we talked about that at the last meeting, like the Fourth of July Committee, they're the ones that are going to be doing a lot of the work anyway. So, you know, I, I would imagine, and it become a big part of that. I think that's kind of what happened, the bicentennial. So, but there were new things, like the interfaith service, dating myself, but the interfaith service, I believe, first happened for the bicentennial.
I do, you probably all remember the bicentennial for the town, first of nineteen eighty.
The tricentennial.
Tricentennial, yeah, I remember. We had the school t-shirts, we go.
Hmm. I worked on that. Remember that, too.
We have that one, two hundred and fifty, plus three hundred and fifty.
Sixteen eight.
Twenty thirty.
Twenty thirty, okay.
Wow.
Hopefully those two.
Yeah, I hope so.
Well, I mean, those of you who said they can't remember the bicentennial, you'll definitely be there, but yeah.
I hope so, too, Steve.
Yeah, that band, Up For People, if there is one back.
Up For People.
Yeah, I remember that. Yes.
My point earlier was, we have to do something unique to celebrate, not a regular normal Fourth of July celebrations. You can pass it for this, it's separate.
Fair enough. I agree.
Also full N, obviously, but.
Right. I like the members that you're suggesting that this council is going to vote on in just a moment. I like that the, the basic committee is not too big. And then from here, we can get, they can get people to help them. So, any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Administrator.
Yes.
Mr. Chairman and members of the council, the next item on the agenda is I one. This is public notice for CRMC, and this is Andrew Bernstein, two sixty-two Clayton Road, Brooklyn, Mass, four seventy-two Papa Squash Road, Bristol. And this requires response by October twenty-sixth.
Diane, I know this is typically, this would be the harbor master weigh-in. Are you, you have no reason to, any concerns on this one?
I have not.
So no concerns, then?
No.
Mr. Administrator, did you, anything of concern here? I did not see any. So, okay.
No, the harbor master approved.
What's it, so it's just a receive and file, then?
Motion to receive and file based on the positive recommendation from the harbor master. It looks like it's a mechanized float lift, so it doesn't, I, I don't have a problem.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any other discussion? So we have a motion and a second made by Tim and Mary. No other discussion? Mr. Administrator?
These all go for the harbor commission, and at the meeting on Monday, so I can guarantee it, but I'm pretty sure that they do review all of these. I've written all objections.
And as Tim did mention, we do have a recommendation from the harbor master, too.
Congrats.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Mr. Chairman and members of the council, the next item on the agenda is I two. This is Director of Community Development Williamson, and this is in regard to the Natural Hazard Mitigation Plan Update twenty twenty-three.
So Diane, I'm going to call on you unrandomly on this, because you knew this one was coming. So.
I did. So this is the five-year update. We're a little bit delayed due to some scheduling. We actually received a grant to hire a consultant to do this plan, but it took a while to get that underway. So we are now here with our draft plan. We've worked with a consultant from VHB, and we had many Zoom committee meetings with the steering committee of the town staff departments. Town administrator participated. We went through the, the plan that we had previously, and we looked at what we wanted to continue to do, what mitigate, what mitigation items we needed to keep on the list and what things we had completed. We do review the plan annually, but this is the bigger five-year update. So tonight you have the draft, and we're asking for your vote to send this to, authorize us to send this to REMA and FEMA, the two agencies, Rhode Island EMA, Emergency Management Agency, and the Federal Emergency Management Agency. Both have to review and approve it. Usually what happens is they come back with comments, and then we are back to you with the comments in response to their, or the edits in response to their comments. And then once that's done, we'll ask the council to adopt this. You don't have to adopt it until it's approved by those other agencies. So tonight is just to authorize us to refer it to them. And if you have any comments or questions or anything you think that we need to edit, and you're, you know, happy to take those as well.
If I may, Mr. Chairman, well, first of all, thank you. It's quite a comprehensive document. No, I did not read the entire thing, but I perused through it. I found it to be very informative and address areas of concern in the town, and also actionable items. So definitely a very, very, very important document, and certainly will be interesting to hear from REMA and FEMA as well.
Yes, and thank you. And, and so, you know, some of the top mitigation items, obviously, drainage, you know, green infrastructure, trying to build in resiliency to some of our infrastructure. And once this plan is reviewed and approved and adopted by the town, it will allow us to apply for grants to do some of these mitigation items. So that's one of the reasons why we go through this effort. But it's also good for the town to just keep the priorities on the top of the list.
Diane, I thought it was a very comprehensive plan. It was great to see the projects that we are working on and putting into place, or would expedite any disaster recovery or mitigate that problem immensely. So it's, it's so wonderful to see that we're on top of it, the diagrams, the mapping of where the flooding would happen, things that we need to really keep an eye out. It's great that, just looking at Tanyard Brook, all that money we put into Tanyard Brook, what it does to mitigate that flooding issue. So I think the goals of this document are in place, and I don't have a problem making a motion to authorize the submission of the plan to Rhode Island EMA, is it, and the FEMA for review and approval.
Second.
Motion made by Tim, seconded by Tony. I'm not going to state the whole thing again. Is there any other discussion?
I just wanted to, I, I just wanted to, you know, follow up on some of the things that my colleagues have said. It's, there, you can tell that there was a lot of work that's gone into this over the years, right? For you, what were some of the major highlights on this latest update in terms of the document?
I think, you know, now we're looking at not only addressing based on today's storms, but forecasting future storms, and looking at potential impacts from the civil rise. I think, you know, one of the things that we're looking at also is just the partnerships that we need to have with some of the state agencies, because a lot of the infrastructure, you know, one fourteen, obviously, and, and other places like that are within the state's jurisdiction, Papa Squash Room, portions of it. So I think that was sort of a highlight for us in this plan. And I, I think, you know, I'm also proud to say that we've also accomplished a lot of the things that we had in prior plan. That was with all the departments, you know, the police, fire, DPW, you know, just to look at the boxes that we did check. There's still a lot to be done, but we did accomplish a lot, too. So that was, that was kind of nice to see.
Well, that's what I, that's what I really liked about this report, was you could actually see the progress that we've made since past years and everything like that. And I think that it did a really good job of demonstrating some of the areas where we still have a little bit of work to do in terms of, you know, like, some of the, maybe the, well, the things that may seem easy, but really aren't really that easy, like the evacuation routes, making sure that they're marked and everything like that. I noticed that, that was in this report, and I was really glad to see that, because every time I'm driving up on State Street and I get to Medicom Avenue, I notice that they don't have the evacuation route sign. They just have the arrow up or, or something like that. So when I saw that, I was like, you know what? I'm really glad that we're doing this, we're keeping track of this stuff, and that we're following through on it, which is probably the most important thing that we can be doing. It's really nice to be able to try to see around the corners and make sure that we're, you know, we're ready for when the unthinkable happens, or when we're just, when there's things that are typically not, not planned for. It looks like we're pretty well-planned for these things. So, thank you, Diane.
Well said.
Yeah.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Thank you, Diane.
Mr. Chairman and members of the council, the next item on the agenda is J one, and this is RFP ten twenty for the Historic Consultant Services, and this is for the survey of the Bristol Waterfront National Register Historic District. We did have the bid opening today. We received two bids. The first bid was from Libra Planning in the amount of fifty-four thousand three hundred, and the second bid was from Catherine Kavanaugh from the Historic Preservation Consultant in the amount of thirty-seven thousand four hundred.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we refer this to the town administrator and the director, I mean, the director of Community Development to serve in the best interest of the town.
Second.
Motion made by Tony, seconded by Tim to refer as stated. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. It's just quiet now, isn't it? Do I have anything left? I have a proclamation. Because this is, what do we call in this? A special report now?
This, this is an ad item.
Oh, yes. We didn't get a motion to that effect, did we? So, and, yes. So could I have a motion to add?
So moved.
Okay.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Outstanding. Great. So this is a proclamation requested from this council to say publicly that we are, and I'm just going to read it, just a couple of lines here, that whereas alcohol and drug abuse affects individuals, families, and communities across the nation, it's imperative that visible unfulfilled efforts by community members be launched to prevent drug abuse. Red Ribbon Week offers citizens the opportunity to demonstrate their commitment to drug-free lifestyles. Barbara, did you want to come up and speak to this real quick? Because this is on your request, and I think it's extremely appropriate.
I can read it as painful, boy.
I appreciate that.
So, every year nationwide, October twenty-third through the thirtieth, Red Ribbon Week is recognized on, from nineteen eighty-five, a DEA officer was captured, tortured, and killed by a Mexican cartel while he was trying to prevent illicit opioids and drugs from crossing the border into our country. So from that time on, we recognize the hard work that our law enforcement, DEA, community coalitions, and health services to keep our youth and our families drug and alcohol free. And we're just looking to have the town support us in this effort.
Well said. So this was signed by all of us, all this council, so myself, Mary, Tony, Tim, Aaron, the clerk, and the administrator. So thank you, and this is for you. So, and thank you for what you and all of you do.
Thank you.
Give you a clap on that.
Oh, no.
It's more important to be here. Right? So we have no others. So can we have a motion to adjourn, please?
So moved.
Must we?
Second. Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Good night, everyone.
Good night.